Welcome, everybody. Today is December 10th. Christmas is right around the corner. Can't believe it already. Call this meeting to order. We're already in executive session this time of this clock to regarding attorney issues and a student placement concern. We'll have to call the regular meeting to order if you could join me now for the pledge, please. First up, routine matters. The Board of Education minutes for November 12th meeting 2024 as well as CSAG recognition list in your packet, as well as the treasurer's report for September 2024 and October 24. Do I have a motion? Subtle? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to staff recognition and our staff spotlight.
All right. So, actually, I'll hand these to Mrs. Leone, but we wanted to get back in our routine of recognizing outstanding staff members who make great contributions to the district. So, we are focusing on our, some of the great stuff that our transportation department's been involved with. So, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy and...
All right. Well, if you want a group of dedicated, persistent people, I'm going to say look no further. So, I'm going to call up a few individuals. So, if you can come up and join me and that I'm going to have just a comment or two. Lori Gardner, who was asked, Lori? Steve Jeffries, Harvest, Dusky, Cheese Salado, Gary Salado, Vicki Watson, Danielle Gardner, Bitter, Sarge, Ener, Cindy Clark, Salem Loachis. So, I'm going to just ask you guys just to slide a little bit over. So, this group here has spent countless nights, weekends, and holidays to prepare a display that wowed all ages, young and old. So, I don't know if anybody attended the parade of lights. We have a short clip on the screen and hours and hours. Oh, that was a very short clip. Is that the second one, Mike?
That's the, yep, yeah, one's a little bit shorter, but I'm...
Data storage is expensive.
So, Candyland, yes, was, was the display this year and first place they did take. So, the creation of community involvement. I would like to harvest. If everybody there's... And then we're going to take the...
Tracy's basing it out. Cindy, wasn't there, oh, Cindy, wasn't there over 50 entrants this year or something like that?
Five. Fifty-eight total, sixty-four registered, but some emergency vehicles were late. Yeah. We did sixty-plus hours putting that...
So, this is like a real one, not like when I go up and show up with a rice because I was the only one that was actually in my group. You actually had like almost sixty people.
I'm the one. We were shy.
Yeah.
How many lights do you think? How many lights?
How many dollars? Amazon got sold out. I bought Amazon out.
All right. You ready, Steve?
I should open it.
Oh, I gotta open it. Oops. Well, on behalf of the board, we thank you and certain that the community thanked you for participating and enjoyed what they see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy, is that the trophy you won? Did they give you that for winning?
Yes.
Did they give you that for winning?
Yes.
It's very nice.
I was followed when it was second.
Oh.
I can't even begin to tell you how competitive Cindy and her team are because you want to talk about, I mean, she was, had a singular focus on winning this year, right? I mean, it was not, Cindy was not going to say, well, it was just, participating was enough. She wanted the trophy and she broke through after several second-place finishes.
I saw it. It was amazing.
It was. It was awesome.
Yes, nice, nice job. I think you guys deserve a ton of credit. I mean, you guys don't get enough credit as I do just driving around to our kids every day. I lose my mind with two teenagers in the backseat of a truck, let alone an entire busload full, and then be able to do all that work. I think it looks good for the district, too. I'll say that. But it's, you know, we're a small community and anytime, whether it's the transportation department, food services, our teachers, whomever, anytime you guys can make the district literally shine brighter is a huge step in the community. So, thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Nice job. That's the one's staff spotlight, correct?
Yes.
Moving on to presentations. First up, I have our FFA trip update. Ms. Ponor?
It's me again. Girls at night, a volleyball game, and working on the horse park. So, it's me again. So, the girls, Riley Rothberg and Bridgette Carpinho, went to Albany for the first, hopefully, annual youth agricultural conference. It involved FA, Manners, 4H. And we had quite over four hundred that were attending. They had a two-day event, or a one-and-a-half-day event. So, on day one was the conference kickoff and we had a panel discussion with the Cornell Agricultural Life Science College Director moderating that. On the panel was Commissioner of Agriculture Richard Ball, SUNY Chancellor John B. King Jr., and the third person whose name I cannot remember. Then, after that, they listened, well, the moderator asked the panel questions and they answered them. And it's based on things that are going on in SUNY, also what's going on in agriculture. And the other person I know is a businessperson, so we talked about what, what business opportunities there was in agriculture. After that, they moved on to issues breakouts. These were five rooms filled with different agricultural focuses. They talked about what type of education it takes to get into the field and what they can do to prepare. So, that was kind of interesting for them. And then they switched every, I think, twenty or thirty minutes. So, they would switch into a different room. They could go to two different rooms. Then, after that, they had the career roundtable, and my girl said that was the best part of it. Each of the rooms, there was five or six rooms that were filled with six individuals in a specific career field, including environmental science, vet science, mechanics, plant science, horticulture, ag business, and that kind of stuff. And you could go into the room and there were six people and you would switch, you know, kind of, you would listen to that person talk for so long and then you would switch and you could go to another table and listen to that person talk. And then you could also switch rooms. So, they really enjoyed that because they got to learn a lot about what it really is like in that career field from a person who's working in that career field. And we did have two, Canisoda Lombai, at that, Mr. Haas, and I cannot remember who the other one was. Then we had a dinner with dignitaries, and I say that because there's a whole bunch of legislators and senators going around. I have too many to name. We had some government official staff there. They interacted with the students. As a matter of fact, we had rules with the adults that we were not allowed to have, when we're the one adult at the table, other than, I mean, FA and the Manners and 4H. So, there was at least one adult at each table, and the tables were filled with children. And then the dignitaries kind of filled in those tables so that there was always an adult, at least one or two adults there, and there was somebody that the students could converse with and encourage them to learn about each other. So, that was nice. The next day, they had future-focused workshops where they got to choose those workshops for four or five of them, and they were focused on community involvement. How to get your community involved or how you can be involved in your community regarding to agriculture and food security and security. Also about service, what kind of service you can do for the agriculture industry as well as your school and your community. They also had an ag education, what kind of things are available on ag education and what kind of careers are available. They also had a full-on career fair in there with all the agricultural colleges present, representatives, and the kids were able to talk to them about the different majors. So, it was very nice. The kids had a good time and they got a lot out of it. And the other questions?
Any questions? Thank you, as always. Got to have a good time.
Thank you.
Next presentation, our SPO advisory program.
So, we're really happy this year with having two outstanding SPOs in the district. This new for us this year, having the service through the Madison County Sheriff's Office. But Officer Kurgan, Officer Adams, who have been all over the place, if you're here during the day, they're everywhere, which is exactly what we want to happen. They're very visible, very involved in, in a lot of aspects of what goes on in the school. So, Mr. Schultz is going to tee it up for them so that we can hear a little bit about one of the programs that they've been working on already, you know, already in the first couple of months. They're, they've already worked hard to implement some things that will help kids, so.
In addition to their outstanding presence in act, activity throughout the district, our SPOs have been now involved with our students, in this case, the seniors, in the driver awareness presentations course, if you will, in which they're going to be covering and have been covering things like traffic stops, traffic accidents. And then after the juniors are covered through next, in the spring, we'll also cover with some of the freshmen, with the freshman sophomores, internet safety. So, not only are they around, they're present and helping with safety and security of our building, they're actually a direct benefit to our students. And the seniors have just started. We're working through the senior class right now and they've gone, well, it's all turnovers to them.
You guys are on the spotlight now. You're under pressure.
Okay. White Kurgan, I did 25 years with the Town and Wood Police. I retired as a sergeant two years ago. Came on board with the Sheriff's Department back in June in the sub, fill-in, then the opportunity here at Canisoda High School came about. Then he came from the Sheriff's Department, did 33 years, I've done with the Sheriff's Department, working in custody division, working with the kids. It's a nice, after doing 25 years on the road, great change, change, the scenery, working with kids who are eager to learn. He drive me on his program. I got the idea two years back. A family member of mine was listening to talk radio in some state, can't remember where, they put together a program. Every new driver had to go through so many hours with training with the police, police officer before they could get their license. And one of the results of that was the number of complaints from citizens to the police about traffic stops plummeted. We always hear, we need to train the police. We need more training, more training. Well, sometimes we need to train the public, too. And so by working on our training and also training the students, I mean, we can get the community relations a lot better. The kids will know what's, this is what happens when a police officer, you see the lights behind your car, what's going to happen, what the question they're going to ask, what the documents they have to produce. Many people don't know what their insurance card looks like. They don't know what their registration looks like. The kid's just paper log, right? So, yeah, it's kind of important you get pulled over, and these are the ramifications. Well, if you get pulled over and you receive a piece of paper called the uniform traffic ticket, now you have to respond to this. We're just kind of filling a bridge where many dry red programs just fall off, fall short. They don't take care of this. So, so far, it's been pretty good feedback from the kids. We like being here. We bounce between, I bounce between the high school and Southside Elementary. Kind of has a middle school in Peterborough Street. So, we're always back and forth between the day. So far, I believe the feedback's been good, so.
Definitely like having you here.
Questions from the board?
No, just, I was just saying, just a, just a quick comment is it's nice to see our SPOs involved with just, more than just keeping the building safe. You know, I think it helps build a rapport with the kids that learn and respect you guys, but also just to see, you know, you're part of the community as well. And I think there's, I've heard good things about the feedback and stuff with students. So, I think your interaction with the students is, you know, greatly appreciated, so.
I was asked to be part of the ski club. I'm a very close, you remember the National Ski Patrol. They worked in Toggenburg until they closed and Mount Lebert or Mount Down, so I got roped into being a ski advisor for the kids, so. Fine. I love to ski. I'm out two, three days a week skiing, so.
Good deal. So, we're expecting big tricks on the jumps, right? I got that right here and ready. It's in recording, so.
So, I got to head stop that. Ken doesn't like what we're getting, Ken. He's my project this year.
Any other comments or questions?
I've been an instructor since 2005. I was senior firearms instructor. I've also taught CPR, first aid and AED. In my department, we brought out AEDs in the department. The first department in Central New York to have an AED program. That's back in 2000. I had the first AED save, law enforcement save, non-coming back in 2002. I've been teaching a while, so I can, he's, can't just show up and look good. He does that right.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is the 23, 24 New York State Assessment Overview.
Wait, you guys aren't going to wait for my presentation? My feelings are...
They're already in the car.
They're already in the car. My feelings are hurt. Highly offended. Highly offended. Now I have to average the clicker. All right. Wow. This is so exciting. Exciting news. Well, so.
Yeah, remember the front?
Yeah, there's room in the front. So we're gonna go through our long anticipated, pre-3A assessment results. And remember, what we're gonna start talking about, we'll do a little historical ticket, walk back through the last few years as well, to get some context. But these were the assessments that we took last year, right? So in the spring of 2024, and then it takes a while. By the time, you know, first week in September, about we actually get, you know, getting information, but we can't go public with that information until, really, just a couple of weeks ago. So it's been a while, but we've been anxious to be able to get to this point where we can share the state of it. So again, not to belabor the point, because I think a lot of people over recent years, since the assessments have been going on, understand what we mean by, you know, level one, two, three, or four, but just as a reminder, proficiency, if we're saying a student is proficient, then we're talking about a student being at level three or four on the assessment, okay? So when we're showing these numbers, that's what we're talking about, students at level three and four. So we'll take a look at ELA first. And again, as I said, not only are we gonna look at what we did this past year, the first slide we're gonna look at is gonna look at what happened at the most recent administration, and then we're gonna walk back through, dating back to a couple of years prior to the pandemic, just to have some context of where we've been. We're also gonna look a little bit at our BOSI's comparative data, see where we stack up. So there it is, now there's no context, this is one year, this is our most recent battery of assessments, and those are the three through eight assessment results. One of the reasons why we wanted to be able to wait to present our data is because we wanted to be able to talk about data beyond just Canastota, how do we stack up? That doesn't tell you a whole lot, that tells you that that's the percentage of students in each grade level that were at the level three and four, who are being proficient. But now let's go a little bit broader, and we'll bring in our Madison United BOSI's average, okay? So there's some context. So as you can see, we are, again, when I say BOSI's average, that is not weighting districts equally. For example, a big district like Rome is not weighted the same as a small district like, you know, Stockbridge. It is, that's out of the students who can are BOSI's, who took those assessments. And you can see that while we are nowhere near where we want to be, where we intend to be, where we will be, as time goes on, as years go on, there's some things to be pleased with, especially when we take a walk back through the last few years, when we look at the historical data beyond just this past year, what are the trends that we noticed? So you can see in every area, and I won't read those numbers, because you can look at them, but in every area, we're pleased to see that we're actually above the regional average on those scores, for those assessments. So let's look at what are the trends over the last several years, that you see a question board wants to dig a little bit deeper into. So here, we have a look at all the three through eight, and that's a three-year glimpse at those numbers. You can see, obviously, there's some variation from year to year, but what you'll also notice is that pretty much in every case, well, not pretty much in every case, our best years have been some combination of the last two years, whether it was this year or the previous year, our strongest years have been in the last couple of years. And that's not just compared to three years ago, which was the first year, first regular administration, full administration of the state assessment post-COVID, okay? But if we look back, I will as well. So, give you an example. In those packets you have, you have the complete data, so you'll have every grade, and you'll have this for illustration purposes and for purposes of the presentation, I already have the reputation of being too long-winded, so we're not gonna do all four million slides that we had prepared in a packet. But just to give you some examples, let's look back through the last several years. So, okay, 2018, 19. For context, that's the year, the last administration prior to COVID. Following March, that's when COVID hits, those administrations, that administrations that the assessments were canceled. Following year, it was a partial administration of the test, it was not the full test. Okay, so since COVID, we've had three full administrations of the test. Further clarification or context, this was where we were, 1819. This is a year after the district was designated for their performance, okay? So this year that's actually over here further, not on the screen, that was the data, the performance that put us on the state list. This was the year right after we've been designated, that followed that designation up. So we had a lot of work to do, right? If you're looking at those numbers, it's a lot of work that we need to do. You can see the positive trend. When we look at how are we performing, now, listen, the standard is always 100%. Anything less than having every kid be proficient is below our standard, that should always be our expectation. We should want every kid to do, maximize their potential. So we're not satisfied, but when you look at trends, what are the things we look for? Well, you can see, this is the BOSI's average, this is where we are. That's a year after we've been designated as a school on the performance list. Following year, yes, closes a little bit, we're still below the average, same here. You get over into the most recent administrations, we actually now slightly bounced above in fifth grade, the regional average. So again, if we, absolutely not. Is that a positive trend that we're pleased with and want to continue to see that type of trend line? Absolutely. But it's important to keep this type of data in mind, because one of the things that was floated around, or you hear sometimes people talking about, they say, well, test has been watered down, watered down. Well, of course, every year, year to year, the tests change, you don't do things in the vacuum or in isolation, there are different factors involved. That's why we want to look at our performance not only over time, but how do we, how do we compare to our peers? So time, in broader context of how are we doing relative to some of our neighbors, is significant. So there's one example, I'll give you another one. We'll do one more example for ELA. Say seventh grade for ELA. Okay, again, similar trend, we're a little bit behind the BOSI's average, behind, behind. Look what happens in the last couple assessments. We actually bounce above, in fairly significantly above, the BOSI's regional average.
2021 is an anomaly to me, because that was not a complete test. There wasn't a lot of comparative data, it was a short test.
This one, yeah.
Wasn't like the real thing.
Because you notice the gap, again, this was just prior to COVID, you notice there's not a 1920, because that was the year that there was no assessment, and then as Sue just said, that's the year that it was a partial administration, so it's probably the least reliable or accurate compared to other years. But that's where we are with the three. So when you talk about, well, everybody was getting better, test is watered down? No, that's not what the data says, and that's not, don't take my word for it, take what the state says, here's your data, this is the regional data. And it's clear that it's, our improvement has been strong compared to the field, a disproportionate improvement relative to the field, so we're pleased with that. I want to get into our same format with our math data. So you're gonna see some really cool stuff, I think, when you, when you look at this. There we are again, let's just look for a second at those numbers in isolation, the mirror numbers. Now we'll pop up the regional comparison for this year. And there's some pretty, pretty impressive numbers there. Again, for context, and we'll see, again, we'll use a couple of examples just to run through, going back pre-COVID, of what the trends have been. But one thing that jumped out, pre-COVID, we were either at or below the regional average, and I believe it was four of the six assessed areas in math, and four of the six in both math and ELA. Most recent data, our performance this year puts us above the regional average in every assessed area, three through eight, both math and ELA. So to what degree? Well, if you look back historically at where we were, in some cases, we were double digits below the regional average. In some cases here, you're gonna see we are double digits in well over just the minimum threshold for double digit, above the regional average in those areas. So if you're looking at, in some cases, 32%, 20-plus percent, in some of those assessed areas above the regional average. So let's look at an example. Okay, same thing. That's our three-year, three-year trend, and again, you'll see the same thing, that our strongest years have been our most recent years. So, and you really see, when you look at, for example, eighth grade, a substantial increase. Now, math, eighth grade math is a unique animal, in that you don't have all of your eighth grade students taking that eighth grade assessment, because you have some eighth graders who are taking the algebra regents exam, okay? So the numbers are skewed, it's not a complete data set, that's always the case, it's not something unique to this year, it's not something unique to our district, that's just something, that's a piece of the puzzle. So you have a significant increase, for example, though, in the number of students who aren't taking regents, who are performing at a proficient level on that eighth grade exam, significant increase.
There's a lot of growth.
Here we are again, what is, what is the trend going back, 1819, so again, the last year before COVID, below the regional average in fourth grade. First year, which is, you pointed out, the partial administration to the first assessment after the COVID cancel year, partial administration, still behind the regional average. Then, after COVID, first full administration of the assessments after COVID, we're even, right? And then slightly above, and now even more above in the most recent years. So again, is that a positive trend? Is that the way you like to see your charts look? Yes. And again, I think we're just starting to be what we will and should be. Let's look at seventh grade, give you another example, really, really love this chart, same thing, 34%, 20%, below the BOSI's average. Again, almost fell nearly a double-digit discrepancy below. Then we take a slight improvement over the regional BOSI's average, little bit more, and now a substantial, in the last administration, substantial, what is that? 23% over the regional BOSI's average, okay? Not perfect, again, not what we ultimately want, but man, that's really good trend data that we, you know, I wanna really compliment our students, right? Our students are the ones that are sitting there, taking those exams, working and preparing, and doing the things that we're asking them to do, and we need to thank our teachers because they're making it happen, right? That kind of growth doesn't work without tremendous, doesn't happen without tremendous dedication to continuous improvement on the part of our teachers. So that's something that we all, I think, need to celebrate, our students should be proud, because they were really moving in the right direction, and we put out some data that they should be proud of, and our teachers should be proud, because there's people in the class every day making that happen, and holding kids to high standards, and really fitting us to where we need to go. So that's, again, the run-through in the packet, was the complete data, we pulled out some grades to sort of illustrate what was the bigger picture, which was, to varying degrees, we potentially do some examples where you see we're below and then creep above, some of the other examples showed the more dramatic shifts. But the largest point probably is the fact that that only is our performance been the uptick in recent years, but relative to the field, which is what you always want to be aware of. You know, it's great if we improved by 10 points, but what if everybody else improved by 15 points? Well, doesn't mean it's, that's not the case, okay? We can see that we improved, in some cases went from double-digit deficit to a double-digit improvement over the regional average, okay? Congratulations to our students and our staff. Are there questions?
Any questions? Just one comment, I think, is this, can we make this presentation available to the general public on our website or some form, just to see?
They can already.
Brenda's already got it? Okay, just a second, now everybody can see it.
She's pressing the button, and Brenda's pressing.
It's the full presentation.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a similar data for students who are level one and two, just to kind of see the progress for, right, because this is just level three and four, you had mentioned, right? And is it likered from one to four? Is that the level for students?
Yeah, so we can break it down any way, I mean, we can show specifically what if that, if that's proficient, how much is three, how much is four, I mean, we can slice it nice in any number of ways, so.
You can see that there are students that are a level one, you're hoping to see that that's over time, shrinks, you know, as they progress.
Yeah.
And they do have, you have to pull that out of that data, since that's how it comes from the state, because they want to show proficiency, but yeah, we can.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to see all the students through this, this scale, this is really helpful to see, I think visually, obviously, we're seeing a lot of improvement, and our teachers are working their butts off and really grateful for that, but I'd love to see for all of our, all of our students.
So we can, and again, you could really, we can go down the rabbit hole with this, because you could look at it a million ways, so it's a better, like, we can produce pretty much any type of data, you know, as far as the breakdown or years and the work and all that, so.
And really, just for, like, 70% to get seventh grade, for example, then 30% would be the one and two, so it's just the opposite of what.
Right, you just don't know how much of it is ones, how much of it is twos, you know what I mean? So we can always break it down to the more specific layer, you know, we just use that because that's what, for example, when. just use that because that's what, for example, when they put that out, Syracuse.com or whatever they put, in the states, that that's proficient. So whether you're well over, you know, in the high end or you're just proficient, there's not, okay, if you're proficient, you're proficient, that's how they, they look at it. But certainly, certainly our instructional staff, you know, the administrators, our instructional staff, they're at a very detailed level looking at what is that? Where is that student? And who are, what is their profile, you know, so that we can, we can be specific with how we provide instruction or intervention or whatever.
What I would kind of be interested to see is, like, here we've got this three-year window at each grade level, but like the 2021, 2022, or I should say the 2023, 2024 sixth graders were the 2022, 2023 fifth graders. So I'd kind of like to see how that class, you know, each class individually went through, because like I was looking at the ones that had the 70% or, you know, I went through some of them and they did great and then the year prior was, you know, not as great, but then the year before that, they did really well again, you know, so I'm just kind of curious to see how much, how that trend looks within the actual grade as it moves through.
Sure, which we, we have to look at.
You know, have that, when you're looking at that three-year trend, you're looking at that, you're looking at what they were.
Well, I could figure it out, but I'm saying I'd like to see them side by side, like the, you know, three years ago, third graders, then the next year they were fourth graders, the next year they were fifth graders.
So by cohort, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. You can look at it by cohorts. For the purposes of the presentation, we wanted to show though, too, because of the variability, you'd see what does that do again to, what's happening outside of that? Was it just an easy task? Something, oh, it bounced up because it's an easy task, but we looked at the BOSI's average to say, well, here's the context of how we performed as a group. And yes, as a region, for example, at the state level, and it was at ELA, was, ELA was down and up, bear in mind if it's down two and math is up two or vice versa. In other words, it was a slight, slight variations across the state. One was up a couple of percent, one was down a couple of points across the state, so. But again, we can slice it nice in any way, you know, that you'd like, you want to see it. And certainly principals and teachers are looking at that at a pretty detailed level, you know, what we want to, how we want to approach instruction and intervention. Anything else?
Okay. All right, next presentation is our building update from our principals. Jenny, do they always take you first?
No.
Okay, okay, all right, just making sure, I'll call somebody out if I need to. Mix it up a little bit, all right?
It's all good.
Okay, all right.
It's all good, I won't fight anybody for that. All right, so I just wanted to let everybody know that our first and second graders both had a 95% attendance rate for the month of November. So that is three months in a row for Peterborough Street and the past two months for first grade, which is amazing. But you do have to know that the window, first grade is ahead of second grade with that by four tenths of a point. So it's amazing to me. So we're pretty proud, though, these first three months of school and we do, you know, continue to make a big deal out of that with our kiddos, so. Sadly, we had to cancel our winter fun night that was scheduled for the 5th of December due to inclement weather that evening. But I did want to let everybody know that we had some donations of milk and cookies and we have a lot of fun activities. So those treats already took place for everybody on Friday and some of those other fun activities that were going to take place in all of our stations, we had 11 stations rotations, so those are going to be shared. So all of the students at Peterborough and our pre-Kers over at Southside too will also enjoy that, so it's not a total loss. We've got lots of holiday fun coming up, gingerbread house making in pre-K, our kindergarten concert is the 18th, and we've got, of course, a spirit week and a sing-along and Santa visit coming up next week. But I did want to follow up on something and let you see what the finished products look like. So we've got our digital citizen books, citizenship books that we talked about last time, so I just brought you one of each. So we've got K1 and 2, want to pass that around. So the students who had Wonder in Tech is the special that I told you about that Mona Rizzo and Stephanie Emmer kicked off for us first thing in the fall. Chelsea Vasali is back, so Chelsea has replaced Mona in that position. So we had four classes that took, had Wonder in Tech as a special. So now their job is to take their booklet home, finish their booklet, and then they will be awarded a special certificate. And then we've got different badges or buttons for them. You take their picture, make a big deal, pop it up on the flat screen at school, so. But I was, just wanted to make sure that you saw that finished product. There are similarities among all three and of course we kick it up a notch with the level of difficulty, you know, as the grades go up there. But they're doing a great job. I think we have 15 kiddos who have turned those in already, so we'll keep that on the forefront and continue so all students, you know, will have the opportunity to do that throughout the year. That's it for Peterborough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crin.
Thank you. I just want to start tonight, just during this time of giving, the season of giving, to acknowledge and thank the work that Connected Community Schools does within our district. And what that means at Southside is the hub is stocked with snacks and there's fresh yogurt while it lasts, that's a big seller. With the change in the weather last week, for example, some students came in and they didn't have boots for recess, so to clothe them. They made the contact for us with Clear Path with veterans, they, you know, made that happen. And I want to thank you for approving our, our partnership with the YMCA. So we're really excited about this, but it wouldn't have been possible without the referral from Connected. They were the ones that tipped us off to the opportunity. So more to come about Fit Kids, but I'm just so excited about this because we're in the planning stages right now to have the Y come in, in the morning before students start school, because we start later, obviously, and get them moving, so have some fun fitness activities. So we're really looking forward to that. And on this instructional side, I just want to go with what Mr. Vassetto was talking about earlier, I just was thinking about some of his, the words that he used, being what we will and should be, that focus on continuous improvement, setting those high standards, but really the bottom line is that we're setting students up for success, you know, all, and just the investment that our teachers make in that, we know is, is to be complimented. But one thing that's coming up for is the CBT practice. And that is provided and presented to us by our instructional specialists. They've committed to, to developing lessons for us that the teachers are going to implement during WIN. So we looked at some of the data tonight for the fifth grade ELA test and math, that was shift last year to a CBT test. So that's a huge shift in and of itself, you know, just taking it from that paper-based writing and ELA to computer-based. So during WIN, our instructional specialists have designed lessons for students to practice using those tools, computer-based tools, practice typing, a lot of our kids are still navigating, you know. And so, but it's consistent pervasive practice so that if you walk into each and every WIN class, that's what they're going to be doing on Thursdays. So setting each and every one of those students up for success. So just compliments to them for, for the work that they did on that. And then, of course, 'tis the season, so we have our Christmas concert coming up this week, 10 o'clock on Thursday morning, if you're available, come and join us. And then our first annual third and fourth grade dance Friday evening. So we're, this is going to be new for us, but it's going to be stocked full of fun. We're going to have our dance floor in the gymnasium and we're going to have two classrooms across from that filled with games and all sorts of things. So Merry Christmas to all of you, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like that third and fourth grade dance.
Good evening. So I'm going to start out, talk about the middle school, the activities that we have been doing. So again, shout out to Connected Communities, they hosted a bingo night. They are going to try to either support or host an event at least once a month. So last month they did a family bingo night, which was awesome, and we had a, a high school student and come be the caller, so she did a great job with that. This past Friday, Connected supported our student government and we had another middle school dance, there was about 145 students that came. And next month Connected is planning, it's in the works of doing a movie night, a family movie night, so that's in the works, so we'll see how that goes. Other activities, we have our 5'8" concert on Thursday. And then next week, we also have Spirit Week for our students, we put that out today what the themes are for each day, and we're going to end the day before break with a pep rally with some games that the students can sign up for and have a little competition between grades. So like Ellen was talking, also, we are preparing our kids at the middle school level using those lessons prepared, shout out to Wendy Satchel, for our kids getting used to using the tools that they will need for the computer-based test. The only grade that's not doing a computer-based test this year is our seventh grade math, otherwise, but they're still practicing the tools because they will need to, but that's the grade that's not this year. So learning the tools from the lessons. Our seventh and eighth graders don't have WIN, so they have AIS, a lot of them do, either on Wednesdays or Thursdays, otherwise the teachers have access to the lessons too to start practicing those tools in the classroom. We are continuously focusing on the culture of the building, building a 5'8" feel and the culture of our building. Mark Saloha, who is our DASSA guru from BOSI's, has been coming in and doing work, more intimate work in the classrooms with the students. Last month he talked about reporting DASSA, what that means, what bullying is, looking at different definitions between bullying and conflict, we talked about that. This month, he is pushing into the classrooms and he is focusing on the bystander effect. He shows a pretty powerful video that when 10 people are there, it takes a lot longer for someone to step up and help as opposed to if one person is there seeing someone struggle. He also is focusing on empathy. So he's had a lot of, I think with the kids seeing him more in the building and getting comfortable with him, he's having a lot of positive discussions with the students. He'll be with us, he was sick one day, so he will actually be with us two days next week, one day with our fifth grade and one day with our eighth grade students. Our next step is he plans to return in the spring and do more work in the classrooms, but until then, during the winter months, he is going to be giving us different information that we can put in our announcements. And yes, the kids still are doing announcements, we have a sign-up every month and the students do the announcements still, so they'll be able to hear positive messages from their peers. So the last thing, Mr. Schultz and I, and looking at reports from teachers and parents and just a lot of concerns out there, we have realized that we are really, need to focus on some consistent practices with our grading and assessment. So we are putting a committee of teachers together, so we actually have our first meeting on Monday. It looks like we will probably eventually break to a middle and high school, but we're going to start together and look at buttoning up some of our practices with our grading and assessments, so that is what's in the works in the middle school.
Good evening. Certainly, mental health always remains at the forefront of what we do and very happy to have back again this year the Mental Health First Aid Group, which is based out of the Madison County Rural Health Council. And they have instructors that come, and this year it's just after Thanksgiving to just before the break. And they really hit on mental health and, you know, identifiers and just trying to educate our students more in a positive way. And so Mrs. Breckenridge, our health classes report's going well and they're engaging the students in a very positive and proactive way. So it's a, it's a big plus. It went very well last year. They always seek feedback as well to get better each year, but it's a topic that can never go on the side, it always has to be at the forefront. And empowering our students to know more is only to their benefit and to their families, so that's very important as well. Couple things I'm doing a follow-up, as you know, we started off this year with the teacher-student advocate program, the idea that every student in this building has a teacher identified for that student, so that every student, that no one gets lost in the shuffle, if you will. And moving forward, I just sent out a survey to the teachers and got some very good feedback, some of the obstacles, some of the ways to look at it in a more effective and efficient way. But I appreciate that and we continue to assess it, but it's a, it's a positive program in which we are paying attention in a more direct and organized way outside of the class, outside of the athletics and drama and things like that. So I find that to be very helpful and appreciative to the teachers and their feedback. Two of our leadership groups, just to talk about, our leadership cabinet, which meets on Wednesdays, is continues to work on, they're going to look to try to maybe, or not maybe, look at a project of reading to the elementary students, as well as the end of the year project, which they did last year, actually they've done it for two years now, it'll be the third year, that the community awards that we give out, recognizing alumni, recognizing the community, it's a, it's an outstanding program of great positive, you know, feelings, if you will, and recognition of those that have done great things for our community and for our school. So they're working on that. The Chick-fil-A Lead Academy will be at Chick-fil-A next week to experience some food, but also to present to the operator, Jim Zatauski, and I don't know if you read the article on him, he suffers and is battling ALS. And I just want to read the title of the article to kind of give you a sense of, of what he does in running his, his operation there. And our students are going to present to him what, how their, their experiences have gone so far in the program. But the title of the article, it's on Syracuse.com, "He Runs Upstate New York's First Chick-fil-A Without Moving or Speaking a Word," because he can't. So it's an impressive example of persistence and grit. And our students are going to meet him and also do a little, just a brief presentation about what they've experienced in the Leader Academy so far this year. And so that's, that's a positive as well. Very happy to, to note that we have an alumni, alumni day coming up next Friday. We've had an alumni group working since the fall, they did some things for the, for the pep rally in the fall, and they have crafted and organized a program on the 20th, the Friday before the break, in which alum will come into our classes and talk to the students about their experiences of what they've done. And including our own, our own alum right here and our own teachers, for example, will be a part of it. So it's a very positive and proactive measure to recognize your school, we're trying to build spirit, build back, you know, tradition and the, the culture here. And so we have a very dedicated group of teachers and staff that are in this and I thank them for the, for the work that they're doing and the work that's going on for this Friday. So the first part of the day will be alum speaking to our students while we're rotation for all high school students, and then in the afternoon we'll have our pep rally. So just another positive experience for our students and the positive example of our, of our great school, our great school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions before I move on? Moving on to new business. "Resolved: The Devoutive Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board has hereby approved the following policies. Policy 5405, student conduct on school buses. Policy 0013, Title IX grievance process. Policy 1100, records management and access. Policy 6404, rights of nursing employees to express breast milk." Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Our student board member has other commitments tonight, so there's no student board member update. Moving on to committee reports. I'll start with academic.
Can I give an update? So we met. So some updates we have here from our last two meetings we had, we looked at our retention policy, we kind of did some revisions that was brought to our attention by the policy committee. So we're working on those to bring back to policy to review and to approve, so that be something. and to approve. So that'd be something coming up and for discussion for another future board meeting to look at. We just did discuss, which we get presented tonight, was a three-to-eight assessment summary accountability. They discussed too in our committee updates, they have the curriculum council that we have wrapped in each building, teachers and administrators, mix of subgroups. They meet monthly. They focus on different subjects. Social studies, they meet periodically. No, sorry, meets monthly. So they did some periodic weekly now that they're going up to sixth grade. They're doing some vertical alignment writing. Science, they're meeting more frequently to kind of align the needs of science, to kind of have it more structured. AIS, the focus is seventh and ninth grade, so they're getting guidance involvement for that. I know there was something mentioned about tonight about grading assessment. That's a work in process to kind of have a more like structured for grading, you know, assessment, you know, for like K through fourth and then V through 12. That's something that's going to be discussed to have a committee and works for that. They're looking at health and wellness to develop some of their initiative for staffs and students, like a walking type of program, mindful techniques we kind of discussed about. They have a faculty advisory council that met just recently and some of the things that they were kind of discussing at their meeting earlier this month was some things that they were working on was questions about feedback regarding the time adjustments for the time for school starts and end for Peterborough on South Side, maybe kind of looking at it for the next school year about just times a little bit to have some little bit more cushion. There was also too about high school attendance. There maybe was really low attendance hearing elevated level of concern. Middle school, there were some kids absentee. Pulling kids aside to get them caught up was hard to do that came out of that. There was some concern too with some of the younger kids, a challenge especially for kindergarten, adjusting to the A and B schedule. It was okay for the adjustment for the older grades. And we're also going to have coming up next Monday, we're going to meet again. We're going to have Amy Coens. She is a data analyst from the Mohawk Regional Information Center come in and talk to the academic committee a little bit more about district accountability and data use that, how we are measured by the state impacting us. That'll be our next meeting.
Yes, we met very shortly earlier tonight. The one thing we are putting together is hopefully have the budget calendar ready to vote on for our next meeting in January. They'll have a list of everything that's going to be going on throughout the year. A couple of things with that, with the release of the Rockefeller Report, there are talks about possibly having changes in the funding for education system, which could be good, could be bad, depending on if they even want to do anything with the report. It's nothing that has to be done, but something that's important that we're keeping an eye on. Also, obviously, with the election, there's new administration coming in and the Department of Education, as everybody's probably aware, lots of talk about what the future of that is going to be and how the funding of education will be funded federally as well as throughout the state. And I know our CTA friends will be going to lobbying days a lot with our fellow NICE and UUP members for funds throughout the state, because I think all of us know it's going to be very important how we continue to fund our public education for the next couple of years. And the other thing to mention is with the capital project, I know we're still finalizing that project, but what that project ends up looking like, we talked a little bit tonight, with the new administration, inflation obviously has been happening, supply chains and possible tariffs coming in, what that project looks like, we might have to make some adjustments with that based on available funding and what the cost of everything will be. So that will be something we'll be keeping an eye on. I'm sure it's facilities as well, so.
Facilities. Not met since our last meeting. Policy?
Short update. Met on the November 12th. Reviewed the status of a couple of policies, some of which we voted on tonight, as well as the grade level retention policy, which is over with academic, concussion management policy and student medications policies, and the need for a music instrument rental policy. A lot of these are being worked on with later relations, so those will be coming down as they are better developed. Would have had more to share, but it's in motion.
Got it. All right. And the last one I have is sort of an official unofficial committee regarding our mascot. So just wanted to share an update. This has been kicked around for a while. Those who've been following it realize there's some districts locally that have made some changes recently. Just wanted to give you a quick recap as to where we were. Going back, God, it's over a year now? It's about a year?
Yes.
About a year. Those who weren't aware, the state came out with a mandate addressing all districts that had any Native American imagery or brands, logos thereof needed to be removed from any of the district's logos. Our district decided to play it rather slow. Some districts quickly jumped out and made immediate knee-jerk reactions. We decided that we had a huge affinity for our Raider pride and we're going to let other people kind of decide and see what was going to take course of action. So we were deliberate and slow about how we were going out to make any potential changes based on the state's recommendations. While we did that, we did create a committee that was going to work on being tasked with understanding the public's feedback, as well as the district's feedback for potential changes. After the committee was formed, we created and launched a survey. Most people, I think, have probably already been in this room. A lot of feedback from the district and the community came back and took some recommendations on initial pass at what recommendations were for changing the name. That committee went through, God, I can't even remember how many numbers were there, surveys and recommendations, started the process of trying to whittle that down to some results that we could have put to a final vote for selection committee. During that process, we were made aware of some districts in the state that were sort of fighting or boycotting the state's initiatives and said, no, we're not going to participate in this. You can't make us change. We're not going to change. We're going to fight you. Once those came out, we decided that, okay, we're going to pump the brakes as well. The district thought that we had good standing based on a lot of changes that we made. For those who've been around, we were the Red Raiders for quite a number of years, back in 2001. I believe it was over spring break. We came through and rebranded everything. We painted our gymnasiums. We changed our logos. We got rid of a beautiful mural Mr. Dwyer had down in the tunnel, if I can recall. It was all painted over. And thought we were good to go. So at that point, we decided to jump on the case and file a letter with the state to understand if we had reason to be part of this exemption and can take, maintain the Raider name. Said that we thought we did our due diligence back in 2001, thought that was good enough, waited. And part of the delay with this committee's report was it took six months just to get a letter back from the state. So much of, you know, how the state operates, it's lots of red tape and delays. So after six, seven months, we finally got a response back. The response back was the same information we got initially, that despite having dropped the red and just being the Raiders, any affiliation with a name prior to the existing name you had that was Native American related had to be removed. So we fall into that category as even though we were no longer Red Raiders, we were Red Raiders, there was still some connection that that Raiders was derived from Red Raiders, so we were no longer eligible to keep that name. That being said, you will see there are other districts that have become the Raiders. There have some that have been called the Remodders. There have some that have been called multiple things that, you know, districts have been asked to be removed. Those have been allowed by the state because they had no previous connection to any Native American imagery or indigenous names. So that gets you up to speed where we are now. So since we got our letter back from the state saying, no, this has to be happened, we reviewed that letter with our legal team to make sure we were kind of, you know, we wanted to fight the fight as much as we could. We wanted to delay this as much as possible. But all the recommendations show that this is something that, you know, there's legislation in the state senate and assembly that's looking at some of this stuff. So we've been advised that if you want to play nice in the sandbox, this is a change we have to make. So after the holidays, we're going to reconvene this committee and we'll have an update as when that date will be. But so those who even wonder what's going on with the mascot, it's been radio silence for a while. We're going to pick that conversation back up after the holidays and we'll have some more information to you with what the next steps will be. But unfortunately, it looks like the Raider name will have to change moving forward. So big bummer. Hate to recognize that, but just wanted to inform everybody that's where we were. Board comment, period.
I just wanted to throw in there safety.
Oh, I'm sorry. Safety. I was testing you, just testing you. Safety, yep.
We're meeting on Thursday.
Meeting on Thursday. Okay. All right. Did I skip anybody else?
There was my comment.
Okay. That was it. That was the one I skipped. Okay.
I was going to wait till Thursday to get the update.
All right. Good job. Lauren, you passed. Nicely done. All right. Now, board comment, period.
I just wanted to publicly say thank you to the Drama Club for a wonderful performance of Aladdin. I want to recognize all that were involved, from the directors to the actors, the stage crew and the performance night staff, as well as the parents and community volunteers who donated their time and efforts to make this happen. Truly amazing and inspiring to watch these students come together to bring these productions to life. We have some immensely talented kids in this district, and I say that with full disclosure of my bias, because I, as well as a couple of other board members, have kids that are involved, you know, that are part of that talent pool. That's just, it's an amazing thing to watch and they should be recognized as a source of pride for our district and our community.
Second that.
I think we all did.
Right. Anybody else? I just had two quick things. One, I just wanted to recognize, so the board is aware, we received a nice letter of thank you from the National Honor Society for participation and support for the inductions a few weeks back. That's here, I'll pass that around, as well as a nice gesture and holiday greetings from our staff and support over at the ML Bosse's. So I will share that with you guys to look at. Just wanted to recognize that those were, those were shared with the board. But the last thing I wanted to touch on quickly, maybe I should recap this during our building presentations. But one of the things I think, you know, I hear a lot about in the community, I know we've talked about it as a board, the reconfiguration as well as our advisory period are still big topic areas. I know with the community as well as the board, just to kind of get a pulse of how that's going, sort of thing, some of the things we're working on. I know the advisory period in particular is one big thing that a lot of people are concerned with. Actually, I don't want to say concerned, that's the wrong word, but just interested to learn about of how we're utilizing that from a student's perspective. So as we're thinking about our updates for our next meeting, if that could be maybe a focus, just to sprinkle in some comments about where the reconfiguration is going and how that's working out, as well as the advisory periods. I know those are two big topic areas.
Lauren, for our academics, there is an assessment project being worked on by one of our staff members. They're looking into the advisory period, like good, bad and different, and how that's going.
Perfect.
So one of our teachers is looking into doing a project right now.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to our superintendent's report.
Second pickup on that, when you bring up advisory, just to give you an idea of some of the things happening in the district. Kitchen is correct. With one of our teachers who's doing a graduate project, that's the focal point, when he had interest in doing some kind of school-based project. And so myself, Mr. Schultz, Mrs. Fox, had attended a recent presentation with quite a bit of work had gone into it. So it was, I think, some thoughts, ideas, suggestions came up out of that, because from the beginning, when the advisory period concept was sort of put into play, we knew that this was something that was going to have to evolve and develop over time. I'd lived in a similar, under a similar scenario years ago, and every year, it sort of made different tweaks and adjustments. Some things are year-to-year, some things you make in real time. So another piece of the puzzle is we have a standing committee comprised of, obviously, Mr. Schultz, but our instructional staff at the high school, the representative group, who are looking at, okay, what are the different pieces from a logistical piece and supervisory piece and a programming piece? How can we make the best use of that time? There's been, and I wasn't able to attend, we had a meeting yesterday, have been at the previous meetings. There's been, what, at least three or four? I think maybe three or four already have happened, and I know there's another one on the horizon. So those are good, because we get in the room and we say, what's working, what's not working? How do we make adjustments and make it the best it can be? How do we maximize what we have? We have a vehicle now, how do we make the best use of it? We have time where you have, I'll remind everybody, when we talk about concern about advisory period, what that did was open the door for what could be individual or interdepartmental interdisciplinary planning time, which was a key thing that we wanted to, I don't think that's talked about enough. It's different, but that opened the door that every day, or every other day, I should say, people could have access to colleagues or individual additional planning. The other access point is students. And so we've had some feedback, for example, that suggests in certain areas, it's working well, because those teachers have additional access to students who would benefit from access to the teacher, additional help and assistance. You saw earlier tonight, our SPOs talking about some of the newer things that they're starting to introduce into that period from a safety standpoint. Guidance, for example, can use that as an access point for grade level meetings. Our nurses are finding that they're able to access students then instead of taking them out of their math class or their English class. So there, as we would have anticipated, there are going to be some things that you're having immediate benefit from, and there's some things that need to be tweaked. So I think the immense potential upside of it, we're just starting to scratch the surface like anything. But thank the group, thank the committee, Mr. Schultz, Mrs. Bernard, Kuleski, I think, maybe? I don't know. You may have been on that, even though you're not a high school person, but we appreciate all the feedback we're getting. Because again, the point is we're trying to put our heads together and say, how do we maximize the vehicle that we have now, where we can do good things for kids and work with colleagues at the same time. So those are a couple of things that are happening and that's ongoing and we can continue to update you on that. I think it's probably helpful. The plan was, I think they have, actually have at some point, students telling you what they're doing during advisory, you know, sampling of that. So that can be a part of a future agenda as well. Not to be a downer, but Mr. Sanziole mentioned the Rockefeller Institute, you know, and we're concerned, as he had mentioned, we're concerned with, we're concerned with the uncertainty, you know, because it was a 300-plus page report. And so it's a lot of stuff. And we don't know what is going to happen necessarily with that because of the recommendations. And so to clarify, you know, with some of the things that people were, you know, bouncing around out in public and media was, okay, so this is happening or that's happening? Well, we don't know, because that was a, they were commissioned to produce this report on a fast timeline. They even note in their report, they would have preferred a longer time to be able to put that report together. But the board is out there. Now we need to see what is or isn't implemented from that report. Huge implications, because it impacts our foundation aid. It impacts how we're funded and how we plan for funding. So Mrs. Leone will definitely point out, we anticipate, even though budget process is uncertain from year to year, some things were sort of predictable. And now we're in a territory with this seismic shift in funding, because the foundation formula hadn't been changed in, you know, what, 17 years about, about 2007-ish or so. So now we're going to a different model or potentially going to a different model. What does that mean for us? So there's more uncertainty than usual. So, but we don't know exactly what's going to be the outcome of that. So a lot will be coming out in the coming weeks. We typically would have our initial executive aid run budget proposal we'd be getting in a few weeks, we'd be getting in January. And so we'll see if we have had or what the And so we'll see if we have had or what this does at the timeline and, and what we can read into that initial, that initial aid projection. Sort of along those lines of trying to read the tea leaves, we were really fortunate to have Regent Patrick Mannion in district last week. It is not a common thing to have a board of regents member in our school. I don't think I've actually had that in 30-plus years I've been working in schools. So it was great to have him in, in a smaller setting in this room. We had a representative group of students and teachers and community members and administrators, board members. Mr. Sanziole was, was able to attend as well. So it was a large, or a good cross-section of people who were able to ask questions, and he gave us some insight into what his role is, because a lot of times, for example, you know, we start talking about electric buses and things like that, he'll be quick to point out, okay, I can give you my thoughts or tell you what I'm hearing, but this is the role of a board of regents member, this is the role of the legislature and so on. So it was, it was sort of a lesson in how the system works and the various pieces that all come together in different ways. So interesting to hear from him, so there's really two parts to it. One, what can he tell us, how do we assess at the state level that we should be aware of? Part two was, we gave a little overview of some of the things we're working on internally in the district that we think, I shouldn't say internally, it's in partnership with external partners, business partners, organizations, but we wanted to get feedback from him with how does some of the community embedded integrated programs, how does that potentially match with some of the flexibility coming down the pike with the, the, having more options for pathways to graduation? So interesting conversation, and he's very interested in what we're doing. Mr. Bootleman, our BoSi superintendent was here as well, they're interested in continuing the conversation, so it might be an opportunity for us to be able to establish ourselves as a leader in our region with community connected, integrated educational opportunities. Maybe the twist becomes that it also can be a part of a pathway to graduation that maybe wasn't available to us before. So interesting conversation, thank you to, to him for, for coming to Canastota, and I think he'll, I think he will come back, he was scheduled to be here for an hour, we gave him the opportunity to leave if he needed to. This kitchen was here as well, we had a couple of our board members who were able to attend, and he said, no, I'll, I have a little bit more time. He stayed two and a half hours with us. So it's a good opportunity to talk to him. Just a couple other things, echo Mr. Owens' comments about the students' hard work and great performance at Aladdin, at the fall play. Tough thing with that is you do it, you do the performance one night, then you have to turn it around and do it again the next night. So it's not, there's no rest or lull, it's, it's, so congratulations to all of the students and great performance and their hard work and where they represented the school. We also have concerts, as has been mentioned tonight, we have a couple, we have the rescheduled middle school concert is tomorrow night, high school concert, I'm sorry, high school concerts tomorrow night, middle school concert, hopefully won't have to be rescheduled, it'll be when it's supposed to be, which is Thursday night, as well as South Side was at 10 o'clock on Thursday, and we have kindergarten that is 1 o'clock Wednesday. So I almost remembered all of them together, I needed help. Want to introduce Brenda Eggleston in back next to Mr. Sales, you're going to, she's going to be involved with a lot of what's happening in the district because she's going to be our point person for communications going out of the district, so a lot of the things that are being pushed out and it's going to be coming from her. Comes to us with many, many years of experience working at BoSi, she's a Canastota graduate, hit the ground running, it's been great having her here, and there's a lot of things that she's working on, and I think you're going to see the results of a lot of the work she's putting in now and in the coming days and weeks. So look forward to having, get more familiar with the work that she's going to be doing. And finally, PAC, I just always like to put a promotion, a word out for our PAC group, which is meeting next Thursday, December 19th at 5:00. It's been great in that we've had several new members coming in, they haven't always been at the same meeting, but we've added to our number of people who are involved and want to continue to grow that. So please, if you're wanting to be involved with something that's positive about helping kids in developing opportunities, putting our heads together in a, in a positive way to come up with, and develop those opportunities, join us in this room next Thursday. That's what I have.
All right, thank you. Moving on to personnel recommendations, all appointments are pending, clearance upon fingerprinting. First up, retirements and resignations. Resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Nancy Hanley's letter of resignation as a teacher's aide, school monitor, effective December 3rd, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Stacy Snow's letter of retirement as an elementary teacher, effective December 16th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those opposed?
Sorry, one abstention.
One abstention. Motion carried. Moving on to permanent appointments. Resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Ruth Baum as a permanent food service helper, five hours per day, at $17.73 an hour, effective November 25th, 2024, with a 26-week probationary period. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Substitute appointments. Resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following substitutes. Lees Armstrong as a substitute food service helper at $16 an hour and a substitute teacher aide slash school monitor at $16.75 an hour, effective December 3rd, 2024. Peter Ryan as a certified substitute teacher at $130 a day, effective December 11th, 2024. Tatiana Branch as a non-certified substitute teacher at $115 a day, effective December 11th, 2024. Beth Greer as a non-certified substitute teacher at $115 a day, effective December 11th, 2024. And Caleb Bernard as a non-certified substitute teacher at $115 a day, effective December 11th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to coaching. Resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve Jeremy Huff Allen as the boys JV basketball coach for the 2024-2025 winter season. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to other. Resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby cancel the appointment of a general and junior needs advisor for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
You got that over there? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby cancel the appointment of co-curricular position of newspaper, grade, newspaper A, grades five through eight advisor for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby modify the co-curricular graduation grade 12 advisor B position for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, yep, I'm sorry, I just realized that, let me finish that. So in addition to what I just read, rescind Stacy Stignetti and appoint Jacob Smith for the 2024-2025 school year. Now I'll take a motion as read.
Still do.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to public comment period. Anybody have something they'd like to talk to the board? I do have one request here from last time, but I do not see the gentleman in attendance, so I just want to recognize we have your thing here, but I will move on. Nobody else? Future dates. High school band and chorus candlelight concert, December 11th at 7:00. The winter concert for the fifth and eighth grade is December 12th, 7:00 PM. Kindergarten holiday concert, December 18th at 1:00. As Professor Sada mentioned, our PAC meeting is December 19th from 5:00 to 6:00. A reminder, winter recess begins December 21st, closing in on it, we'll return, we'll on recess till January 5th. There'll be a special PAC meeting, health, sleeping, healthy sleeping habits on January 9th from 5:00 to 6:00, and then our next regular board of education meeting will be January 14th here at the Media Center at 6:30 as usual. We have one other thing to go through, we have proposed accession. But I just want to say quickly, thank you to everybody in attendance tonight. I know this is a busy time of year, I ask that everybody just takes a breath and enjoy the holidays. I know it's crazy, kids are off the walls, parents are going nuts, dinners are going to be made, schedules are nuts, but just take a breath, enjoy the holidays, it's meant to be around family and friends, try to take a break, relax a little bit as much as possible, have a safe and happy holiday season, and we will see you guys in 2025. I'd like to entertain a motion for proposed accession, discuss a legal matter, please.
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we're not in session. Thank you, everybody, have a good holiday.